All right, good evening. I'd like to call the April 10, 2025 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Conley will be presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Blackburn for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Tonight for our invocation, I'd like to share a prayer from the Sioux Nation. Oh, our Father of the sky, hear us and make us strong. Oh, our Mother of the earth, hear us and give us support. Oh, Spirit of the east, send us your wisdom. Oh, Spirit of the south, may we tread your path of life. Oh, Spirit of the west, may we always be ready for the long journey. Oh, Spirit of the north, purify us with your cleansing winds.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Conley.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right, Mayor Conley, have a corner.
Thank you very much. Will I move on to the approval of tonight's agenda? Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to ask council to remove item number four under public hearings from tonight's agenda. The applicant has requested that that public hearing be continued to the May 8 council meeting.
Okay. So.
Second.
Hold on a second.
Mayor and council, I would ask that council add a closed session motion to be read after Roman numeral 11 comments by mayor and council. Closed session motion.
Motion to add that to the council.
Second.
All right, motion been made by councilmember Robinson, second by councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we'll move on to special recognitions.
Can I ask Eddie Summers to come forward?
He can't really.
Congratulations, Mayor.
It is my honor to have Eddie here tonight to recognize his retirement from the city of Greenville. We'll take this moment to just give you a little bit of information and history about who Eddie Summers is. So before joining our city team in 2005, Eddie proudly served our nation for four years in the United States Coast Guard, which instilled in him the value of discipline and dedication that would characterize his career with Recreation and Parks. Following his military service, Eddie transitioned to the private sector where he honored his leadership and management skills overseeing several grocery stores, including Pickly Wiggly, right across from Park Maintenance Shop. In 2005, the city of Greenville was fortunate to welcome Eddie to our team, and in 2018, Eddie's leadership was recognized by his promotion to Building Facility Supervisor, where he led the Recreation and Parks Maintenance Division. In this crucial role, he oversaw a wide array of essential repairs encompassing HVAC, plumbing, electrical systems, and various other skilled trades, ensuring the smooth and safe operation of our facilities and parks. Eddie's commitment to excellence was truly exceptional, and he served as an inspiring example for the staff he supervised. His renowned can-do attitude and willingness to embrace any challenges were hallmarks of his tenure. Respected and admired by his colleagues, Eddie was affectionately known in the shop as Papa Smurf, a testament to his supportive and guiding presence. Beyond his professional contributions, Eddie's an avid fisherman and often fishes with Freddie from our IT department. As he embarks on this well-deserved retirement, Eddie eagerly anticipates spending more quality time at home with his beloved wife and grandson, undoubtedly with fishing rods nearby. Eddie, I'd like to say on behalf of the city of Greenville that all of us would be proud if those kind of words were said about us when we retired, which is a testament to your character and the commitment that you have had to the city of Greenville since 2005. I so appreciate everything that you have done to build a better community here in Greenville. You will be sorely missed by your department, but I know your legacy will live on forever. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So now, I'd like to ask Eric Deans to come forward. We are also proud to recognize the retirement of Eric Deans with the Fire Rescue Department, and we know how important our public safety is within the city of Greenville, and these are the individuals that every day show up to protect and serve this community. And let me tell you a little bit about Eric. Eric has had a long and honorable career with the Greenville Fire Rescue Department. He started with the city on October 1 of 1996 and completed his service on April 1 of 2025 for a total of 28 years and six months of service. God bless you. Through the years, Eric has served in many crucial roles within the department, including firefighter, driver operator, paramedic, acting officer, EMS supervisor, and his current rank of EMS specialist. In addition to the traditional roles within the department, Eric also served on the department's Honor Guard team, regularly assisted with United Way fundraiser initiatives, and volunteered to help in any way he could to benefit the department. Eric has also been a mentor to many employees, helping to shape the leaders of the future. He offered steadfast leadership and guidance for new paramedics as they were learning and building their confidence. Eric's patient care was second to none as he offered a calm and compassionate hand combined with a competent skill set, which has resulted in many positive outcomes and lives saved. Eric responded to your emergency, you could be assured that you and your family members were in good hands. Eric has been a true leader within the department and has served the city and the department with distinction over his career. He has been a friend to many and someone that could be counted on in a time of need. Eric's son, Justin, recently graduated from Greenville Fire Rescue Academy 20 in 2024 and is now an active member of Greenville Fire Rescue Department and will carry on Dean's legacy within the department. Dean, I don't know what is prouder, of the service that you have given to this city or the fact that you have raised a child to carry forward that type of commitment to public safety and protecting our community that way. You have a lot to be proud of, not only from the standpoint of what you have done for this community, but the child that you have raised to carry that forward for the city of Greenville and our community. I cannot say enough about what this man right here has done for our community over his years. This is hands-on life-saving right here. These are the ones that we depend on in the baddest times, and we also depend on to be able to train those paramedics that are coming across the ranks so that we can always say that we have the best department in the entire state. And I thank you for everything that you have done to serve this community. Job well done. Do.
Public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
We do not have any registered speakers.
All right, anyone that would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. First board that we have is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Councilmember Foreman.
One second. So, I will be reappointing Bill Redding and Robert Kevin Howard, and a newly appointed would be Kristi, Crystal Rowland.
Second.
All right, motion been made by councilmember Foreman, second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Redding, Mr. Howard, and Ms. Rowland.
Okay, next we have the Board of Adjustment. Councilmember Foreman.
We'll postpone that to May 8.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Blackburn.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Dr. Yoshi Newman, Joshua Gardner, and Dr. Robert Shaw. Second.
All right, motion been made by councilmember Blackburn, second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Shaw, and Dr. Newman.
Next, we have the Historic Preservation Commission. Councilmember Blackburn.
How many seats? Just one, right?
Yes, that's what I said.
I will continue that one.
Okay. Next, we have the Multimodal Transportation Commission. Councilmember Scully.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Dr. Mona Epps.
Second.
All right. Motion been made by councilmember Scully, second by councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Dr. Epps.
This is one that was just recently added. I'm not sure if you have someone, but Planning and Zoning Commission, Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
Continue.
Okay. And finally, we have the Youth Council. Councilmember Willis.
None tonight.
Okay.
Continue with me.
All right, yes, ma'am. Mayor Conley, that concludes the appointment.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which is the public hearings. This is the policy of public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each for a total, for each side, no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or councilmembers, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Mr. Manager, our first public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number five ordinance requested by Hillpoint LLC to amend the future land use and character map for 22 acres from office institutional, OI, traditional neighborhood, medium-high-density TNMH, and potential conservation open space PCOS to mixed-use MU for the property located near the northeastern corner of Dickinson Avenue Extension and Allen Road. I'll call forward city planner, Chris Kelly, for the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, once again, this request is to amend the future land use plan. Staff relies on this plan to determine if a rezoning request is appropriate. So, this request is in anticipation of a rezoning request at a future point. This property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is located near the northeastern corner of Dickinson Avenue Extension and Allen Road, and for added reference, I've indicated where the Speedway is on the northwestern corner. This is an image of the property taken on Dickinson Avenue. To your left would be Allen Road. This is an image of the property taken on Allen Road. To your right would be Dickinson Avenue. Based on the traffic volume report generated for this request, the current land use characters could generate 1,664 trips per day. The proposed land use character could generate 2,088 trips per day, which is a net increase of 424 trips, and during the development review process, a traffic impact analysis will be required. The 424 trips are split between the two adjacent roadways being Dickinson Avenue and Allen Road for 212 trips. These two roadways are currently below design capacity. For Dickinson Avenue, an increase of 212 trips per day would represent an increase of 2% for the average daily trips, with the current capacity being 63%. For Allen Road, an increase of 212 daily trips would represent an increase of 1% over average daily trips and the current capacity being 93%. NCDOT project U 5875 is to widen Allen Road from a two-lane to a four-lane divided median roadway from Stantonburg Road to Dickinson Avenue Extension. Currently, utility relocation is underway, and the project is set to, or estimated to let fall of 2025. Additionally, the adjacent vacant lot to the north here has an approved plat that extends Quail Drive, which is here. As such, this development will also connect to Quail Drive that will allow for alternative travel routes. This property is currently zoned RA 20 residential agricultural. This request includes three different current future land use characters. The future land use and character map recommends mixed use at the northeastern corner of Dickinson Avenue and Allen Road, transitioning to office institutional, traditional neighborhood, medium-to-high-density, and potential conservation and open space to the north, and then residential high-density to the east. Under the current land use characters, the site could accommodate 100,000 to 110,000 square feet of office space and 65 to 70 multifamily units. This request is to amend the current land use characters to mixed use. As you can see, the northeast corner of Allen Road and Dickinson Avenue is currently designated as the mixed-use character. Under the proposed land use category or character of mixed use, the site could accommodate 300 to 310 multifamily units. When the Horizons Plan was last updated in 2016, we had a comprehensive plan committee. The committee developed these eight guiding principles when looking at the future land use plan and where land uses should go. In staff's opinion, this request of mixed use is in keeping with number eight, which is sustainable development practices. This request aligns with the future land use pattern in this area, and staff recommends approval of this request. And on March 18, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request. I'll be able to answer any questions.
I bet you're happy for that to be over, huh?
That's what I'm talking.
If it makes you feel any better, Thursdays are always my worst meetings.
Oh.
I'm just not, I don't know. Everything just doesn't come out right, so. Councilmember Blackburn.
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I've got several questions. I'm going to start with the more complicated one that will probably require you to talk more. So, we have the land use plan, which has got several different uses, including traditional neighborhood, and just looking around the area, it looks like the area is surrounded by traditional neighborhoods. And so, what I'm interested in is with the mixed use, what is going to distinguish this new characterization of mixed use compared to what's already in place, which was a pretty good mix already?
So, currently in place is a number of different characters. The office institutional, traditional neighborhood, medium-to-high-density. The mixed-use character, one of the primary uses in the future land use Horizons Plan is multifamily residential, and then here you have general commercial to the corner here, so there is potential of commercial being developed, but I'm not sure if that fully answers your question.
Yeah, no, mixed use is just a land use designation that I'm just not that, that I'm not as familiar with as, you know, some of the other ones that are more straightforward.
So, in the rezoning report, there's a brief description of the mixed-use character?
Yes, yes, and I read all that. I guess just, you know, kind of, just kind of from the on-the-ground perspective, what does it look like when we see mixed use?
So typically, when you're looking at a mixed-use development, you have like office or commercial on the first floors, and then above you have residential.
Okay, this is the new kind of vertical way that we've just recently added, looking at things where you can do the mixed use in the same building, which we couldn't do before.
Yes, ma'am, that use was introduced earlier this year, I believe.
Okay.
It was about three weeks ago.
Three, yeah.
Okay, okay, so that's why I wasn't as familiar with that. We just approved it. So, okay. Then my next question has to do with the conservation open space. There's a lot of trees and a lot of, I'm sure, lowlands behind this. When or if this were to be rezoned, what happens to that conservation open space? Is it potentially delineated as wetlands by the Corps or what happens there?
So, I'll get a little more information from engineering during the rezoning process, which will come next after this future land use plan, but as of right now, I'm not too keen on the environmental aspects of the property.
Okay. Chris, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Did I understand that Quail Drive is going to stub into this development?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, do you have the map that goes, I guess, further north of Cobblestone? Or is there another exit entrance onto Allen Road other than the one that we see as Cobblestone? Is there one further north of that?
No, sir, it's just Cobblestone.
Okay. So, there would be at least two onto Allen Road and one onto Dixon, probably at the minimum. Is that right?
Yes, sir, just Brook Hollow Drive. Is that what you're asking? This entrance out?
I guess what you're telling us then, so, that's right, because I didn't see that.
And it does, yeah.
What I really get at is that traffic from this development could go into Cobblestone and go out on Allen Road and also to the other neighborhood, so there'd be potentially at least four, four ways to get into this development.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Those are my questions.
All right, any other questions?
Quick one, I promise. Bowery. When we look at a mixed use, if this were to be built out as the mixed use as we've seen it with the retail on the bottom and the multifamily on top, or all a multifamily, do you have, could you just estimate how many of those multifamily buildings might be built on this area?
So, for this request, the future land use amendment, we don't look, just like rezonings, it's not use-specific, so vertical mixed use, it's not use-specific, but for this request, we guesstimate 300 to 310 multifamily units.
And, okay, spread out over how many buildings, depending on how tall they are and that kind of thing?
That's a design question, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I have one more question. So, is the plan for it to be vertical mixed use with the commercial space being on the bottom or actually a separate building?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
Actually, is the plan for it to be vertical mixed use with the commercial space being on the bottom or actually doing an additional building?
Nothing has been submitted as of right now.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. But what you're explaining to us is with the vertical mixed use idea, I just wanted to be clear.
In terms of the future land use character map, the mixed-use designation would allow for multifamily development.
It would allow for, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I know. It passed unanimously and it complies. Did anybody speak in opposition to it at Planning and Zoning when they passed it unanimously?
No, sir.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those speaking on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have 40 minutes.
Hey, everybody, let me see if I can work the technology. It's usually a big no. All right, oh, yeah, okay, great. So, I'm Amanda Bambrick. I'm from the Morning Star Law Group. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Hillpoint LLC. I don't want to repeat, Chris did a really good job, so I don't want to go too far into repeating what he says. Okay, I'll just click it. But again, we've got about 22, 23 acres of this vacant land zoned RA 20. Y'all saw the location. Again, there's sort of a hodgepodge of different boundaries on here. Our goal would be, we have these properties, these three parcels under contract, the goal would be to essentially bring them all to mixed use, transitioning from the residential down to the more heavy potential commercial uses at the intersection and essentially, as Chris's map showed, turning it all essentially this uniform purple. We feel like really, you know, this sort of cleans it up. There's that hodgepodge of uses on there now. This would be more consistent and a little bit more of a dynamic offering with respect to different uses. And I want to emphasize in particular what we've tried to talk to y'all about a little bit, which is this is really preliminary. We are trying really hard to go through your steps, and we wanted to get the map amendment properly first, and then we will be back for, you know, rezoning, we'll be going back to P&amp;Z, we'll be back here. This is really like the first bite at the apple because we want to make sure that we do it the right way. So, we'll be back. We also think there's a good transition here in terms of what your Horizons Plan wants in terms of going from the residential down to the more intense use. Sort of quickly to date, and I've got Will Rutherford here from Hillpoint to speak briefly to you, but he started doing some initial outreach with Shante in the Planning Department back in November. There was additional, you know, management and other outreach over, you know, November, December, and January. We were pulled in in February. We've been talking with Shante, I believe, within that timeframe. They also have instigated the TRC process, and they have been doing some studies sort of at-risk at expense so that they know what they're going to be providing well in advance, so, you know, waiting until the last minute, like some developers like to do, kicking and screaming before they're going to pay those costs. We're not doing that. Again, we got the unanimous vote in March. We are really proud of that. We are doing ongoing outreach efforts with y'all, as y'all know. We are actively speaking with councilmember Foreman about, we talked last week about finding stakeholders in those communities, and you're going to help us sort of identify some of those. We know y'all don't have neighborhood meeting requirements, but I tell my clients that it's important and we're going to do that. We just feel like it's, once we get this map amendment kind of in place, that it's more appropriate to do the next level of outreach, some sort of neighbor outreach with some sort of radius, as y'all have seen me do before. So, we will be going in that direction. It's a little bit preliminary right now, but that's coming. I wanted to stand up here and make sure that y'all knew that. Again, Will is here. He's going to talk briefly about the company and sort of the vision. We agree with the staff. We think it's consistent and compatible with that surrounding area, and we are hoping that you will approve us tonight. We really appreciate your time. And we have Brian Fagundis here from ARC as well for technical questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone who would like to speak in, yeah, come on. In favor, the outcome may come forward, please state your name for the record, three minutes.
Thanks, Amanda. So, like Amanda said, my name is Will Rutherford. I am the VP of Development in charge of the project. Just wanted to say thank you to everyone for the opportunity. It's been a pleasure getting to, you know, know some of you during the outreach process. And, you know, I'll get into what our company does in a second, but again, I would refer any land use questions that you have to Amanda, given that she's the expert in traffic questions as well, to Brian once he gets up here. So, me, just to give you a little idea of my background, so I went to the University of Wisconsin twice, so, Mr. Mayor.
Go Badgers!
And I, before I was in multifamily, I really feel like the job kind of found me because I was playing poker professionally for a little while, went to law school, and in law school, really missed the risk analysis and was a little terrified of the books. So, I was at a great real estate school, and that's really how I got into development was almost on accident. was almost on accident. Did a lot of affordable housing development, and this is not affordable housing. So what we do is called market rate attainable housing. And it's essentially a Class A building that we're able to deliver for a price that is below what the most expensive apartments in the community deliver. And at a time like this, where housing costs are really running rampant because of the housing shortage in the country, this product really helps stabilize it. So we're able to deliver at a price, you know, below some of the competitive Class A comps in the community, because we have a vertically integrated model, which I will get into, that helps us, you know, source materials and build a standard prototype that has been well received across the Sun Belt. So we're only a six-year-old company, but we've built 14,500 units. And we're already ranked number four in terms of national multifamily developers. And one of the huge benefits of our company that we see is we, we build for long-term ownership. So only 10% of the properties that we've built in that six-year period have actually been sold. So that's one of the, you know, communication and consistency benefits that we bring to the communities we work with. So like I said, we focus across the Sun Belt. North Carolina is one of our, you know, our, our key target states right now, because there's such a housing shortage supply. In, you know, and not only doing the studies that, that Amanda mentioned, you know, in terms of understanding what the predict-
That's time.
Okay.
If you're, if you're fine, you can keep.
Okay, thank you. So we try to understand the real estate and what it's going to cost to develop, but we try to identify markets that have a serious need. So, you know, the U.S. has a tremendous housing shortage, and it's delivered 10% of its total supply since COVID. Greenville's delivered 5%, right? And what happens in situations like that, when supply isn't keeping up with demand, is you start to see rents increase and vacancy decrease. And that's what you're seeing in Greenville here. And, you know, by delivering a high-quality product that is below those highest rents in the community, it really helps stabilize that. So happy to answer any questions. And otherwise, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Any questions?
So Will, you and I've spoke, but just for the rest of the council to hear, what is the projected cost of the monthly rent?
Yeah, so right here on this slide, actually, current forecast, it's obviously still being finalized, but current forecast is looking at 1575 for a two-bedroom, which is $200 below what the average two-bedroom asking rent is in your two most expensive multifamily properties in downtown, which are 904 West and Legacy Fire Tower.
And I did ask, I did ask them, but I'll ask you, because when we spoke, I, I don't know that I was clear about with the mixed-use, that the commercial property was going to be on the bottom floor. From the pictures that you showed me, I don't remember seeing that clearly.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you asked that question, because-
Because I was thinking it was going to be a separate building in the other mixed-use area.
Yeah, absolutely. So we wouldn't be proposing commercial space.
Right.
You know, the traditional mixed-use zoning allows for, for housing on its own.
Right.
And it's also consistent with some of the neighboring uses, right? So it would be all multifamily housing that we would be proposing, not vertically integrated.
Right.
But in terms of predictability, as a company, you know, the prototype model that we build, it tells you exactly what we're going to build, right? So when we come to plan commission, we propose it. We don't change our plans because we've raised significant dollars to build exactly that, right? So unlike a typical mixed-use or rezoning proposal where you might have a developer come in and propose one thing, and then it end up getting sold or built to another, we've already raised the capital. It's to build exactly what we're going to propose. So the decision will be very consistent, and something that you can, you know, you can bet on.
From the poker player.
Yes. Men in earnest. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Blackjack or five-card?
Well, I, definitely five-card. Blackjack only for fun, so.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else would like to speak? In favor of the outcome, they can forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm Brian Fagundis here in favor of this. And it's a little strange, following the whole poker player thing. I'm not sure where to go.
You don't know this, but he actually planned this out as a poker player.
Evidently, evidently. Couple of things I'll hone in on that I heard a couple of you guys mention. The, the neighbors north and south of this, we already have had conversations with them. They're in general support of this idea and concept. There's obviously a lot more conversation to be had with it. The neighboring owner to the north, where the extension of Quail Drive will come through, not only is their preliminary plot approved for that, but they're getting ready to head towards construction for the extension of that street. Allen Road, I had a whole list of things to talk about that DOT project, but Chris covered most all of that. But that project's well in the way, and it'll be a welcome change on that roadway. What that will do on the Allen Road side, however these driveways, for whatever this property develops as, they will be all right in, right out. Everything on Dickinson, my expectation is between city and DOT. My expectation is that driveway is as far away from the intersection at Dickinson and Allen as what you could get headed back east into town, for however this develops. But that'll all be vetted through a TIA that'll be coordinated with the city and DOT. So beyond those things, I don't have anything else. If you guys have questions, we're a little early for diving into weeds, because I really don't know enough to know enough in terms of anything specific. But generally, from a land use perspective, that's the high level.
Thank you. Any questions?
One question. You said that you guys, that you all spoke to neighbors north and south of the development. How did you reach out to those neighbors? Because I've had neighbors reach out to me also.
Spoke, spoke with them on the phone, personally.
Okay, okay. And you said that they were generally supportive?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All righty. No opposition?
Hmm.
Interesting. Okay.
And that's, that's all the immediately adjoining.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak? In favor of the outcome, they can come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the outcome may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or a motion.
So just wanted to talk through with council and, and get a little bit of feedback on, number one, I have spoken with neighbors also. I've spoken with folks in, hold on one second. And Teakwood, Cobblestone, Landover, Allen Ridge, and Brook Hollow. In addition to that, because of the amount of traffic that is used as a thoroughfare, pretty much, for the neighborhoods on Frog Level Road, and on Dickinson Avenue. Yeah, I'm sorry, my phone's not wanting to work. I also spoke with folks in Taberna, Barrington Place, Aguirre Trails, and Tyson Farms. There were some that were neutral. I didn't, for the ones that I spoke to, there were some that were neutral. I didn't have anyone like rah-rah. But there were, most of them had some concerns, and I want to discuss what those concerns were. Number one was the proximity to the intersection, and you mentioned that, that you're going to try to do it as far away from the intersection as possible. But where the property is located, everything is kind of close to the intersection. And then the idea of apartments was a huge concern for most of them, because most of the homes in the neighborhoods near there, the first five that I mentioned, are single-family homes or duplexes. And so there was a huge concern about them being apartments, because traditionally, I won't say traditionally, but it has happened a lot in Greenville, where we've gotten new apartments. And over time, between the five and 10-year period, they have kind of degraded in quality over time, and drawn kind of some undesirable neighbors and activity. For example, what was mentioned was Sterling Point. Gosh, what's the name? Kristen Drive, when it first came here, was a very desirable neighborhood and is very different now. Some of the student housing that has kind of transitioned into undesirable spaces, and not wanting that to happen so close to an area where there are homeowners, and that they have long-term investments in their property. So there was that concern. There was concern about the number of units with that possibility being in place. And, and not from them, but from me, tonight, when it was shared, that the, there will be another drive that will go through Cobblestone on Quail Drive. And I wish we could go back to that picture. But that would go through Cobblestone at Quail Drive. And so Brook Hollow behind Cobblestone has already added on. And on Cobblestone Drive, they've got a new entrance going through there that will connect and provide more traffic also. And so that's, that's from me. That's not from citizens. So that would be a concern, that that would be used as an alternative route, because there's already now another neighborhood connecting that would be an alternative route. So wanted to share that. They were deeply concerned, and I'll share with you guys also what my conversation has been with them. And so one of the things that I've shared with them has been that Greenville is really in a season where we're having a kind of a burst of targeted growth, just based on where we're going and how many businesses are locating here, and the potential of new business that's locating here. Much of the area, 10th Street being one, has, you know, been developed a lot, and our area has kind of lagged behind. And I'm saying our area, because I live down in that area also. And, and so that there will be growth coming. Like, it's unavoidable, there's going to be growth coming. And one of the concerns there was, why are we not being engaged earlier in the process to kind of help determine what type of growth is coming? And I share with them that, you know, by law, we can't tell people necessarily once they purchase property that they can't, can or can't build on something. But hopefully at some point, we will be able to get the citizens involved at an earlier time, so that they can give more essential feedback. So I agree, by and large, with some of the concerns, particularly with the apartment piece. And then additionally, tonight, would no one be alternate driveway? But wanted to hear you, you guys' concerns also, if, if you had any concerns or feedback. Because it was, when I talked, the folks that I talked to is very mixed with concerns. Again, I didn't have anyone saying rah-rah. And I'm sorry, guys, my throat is a little tight tonight. But I didn't hear anyone saying rah-rah. I just, you know, some were a little neutral, but most were not necessarily for something that would be a potential apartment complex.
Any other problems or discussion? Councilperson Wilson?
I would be interested to know the change or the difference in the community engagement that we're at at this level, and what we can see at the next time it's brought before us. Hopefully, assuming that it would be, there would be an update to give us by the time that it's brought back before us, what that would look like.
Yeah, and I don't want to, to speak for, for Will here, but so just come up and knock me out if I get it wrong. But, you know, my thinking is absolutely, there will be an update. There will be different and more expansive types of outreach. I-
And we even talked about doing some of that together.
Right, right. We talked about that, I think, on Friday when we talked. Because, I mean, again, we, we like to connect with our council members too, because y'all know folks that we should talk to that I might not necessarily know that Will wouldn't know. So we really appreciated that time and enjoyed that conversation. But I do think we would definitely have an update. Again, the map amendments, they're kind of, they're these weird sort of nebulous things. We feel like we've got a good bead on the situation. But once you get into the rezoning, the process changes a little bit. Things can get more specific. You, you, Chris is already, like, we, we tried to, you know, show the product and stuff, and he's like, doesn't want us to do that. We totally understand why. But it's just very early. So it's, it's nice just from a, you know, a process perspective and from my perspective, getting a meeting set up, like when we have a little bit more certainty at the very beginning of this process. Because again, there's also going to be annexation here. So we're going to be five hearings in over the course of the summer before this can be approved, just by virtue of notice, schedules, y'all's meeting schedule, the PNC, because we'll, it's going to be a month or so at least, I think, and I can't remember the schedule off the top of my head, before we get back here at the earliest. Because we've got to go back to PNC for step one of the rezoning, getting all that stuff filed. It just, the, the process changes. You know, we didn't want to do, quite frankly, the, the item that came off of your agenda, you know, sort of bulldoze through the process and didn't go for the map amendment first. We're not doing that. So we're trying to be respectful of the process. There will be that outreach. We always, I tend to do it with all of my clients that I bring here, and we will have updates. It's just we, we wanted to get a little more certainty at the very, very tip, beginning of, the beginning of, the beginning of the process. Because we know we've got more things to do for sure.
So what I want to be clear of, mainly from staff, is that if this goes through tonight, because no matter what happens there, it's going to need to be unified as relates to the zoning. So as it relates to the next step, after more community engagement happens, when it goes back to PNC, if it gets through PNC and comes back to council, what is the likelihood, after more community engagement, that we would, if we did not agree with that, then what would happen then?
Well, I hope I understood the question. But if, if it's approved to be mixed-use and changed on the land use plan, then the rezoning question, staff would review it and determine if it's in compliance, and that's how we come up with our recommendation. But any zoning approval, that's purely up to y'all.
Okay. Because one of the biggest concerns from those that had major concerns was, if we approved that tonight, would it be like hitting the accelerator and it would not be able to be stopped?
No, no, we would have to come back again through that. Like I said, there's-
And I'm asking that, and I'm asking that out loud, because I know they weren't able to come tonight, but I'm sure they're going, they're either watching or going to watch it later.
Sort of, if I may, sort of have a follow-up question. Could we go back to the slide, please, that has the, that shows the current land use plan? So if I'm not mistaken, if the current land use plan has got this as O and I, it would be in compliance to rezone to R6 and build your multifamily there. You could, in other words, under this current land use plan, you can already build multifamily.
Land use plan and zoning is different.
Right.
Currently, it's RA20 residential agricultural, would not allow for multifamily. In terms of the land use plan, we use that to determine the appropriateness for rezonings. So if a rezoning request for a multifamily zoning district like R6, that would be in compliance with the TNMH and the mixed-use, but not O and I. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah. Then that's a great distinction that we, to be reminded- Okay, yeah, then that's a great distinction that we, to be reminded that the current zoning is RA twenty.
Yeah.
But so O and I does not allow for multifamily, is that right?
O and I stands for office and institutional, more office uses.
But I thought you could use, I thought you could put residential in some of the higher, higher intensity development land use plan categories. I thought you could back it down to residential. You cannot. Okay.
With that, to make sure that it's clear for citizens that would be watching, the big deal is that they are right now zoning for classifications for the land use plan, and the goal is simplified to make them all multi-use so that it could come back for rezoning. And O and I just happens to be one of those classifications. So, and I'm just trying to clarify from her question for people that are watching, we're just going down from four to one, and then it will come back to rezoning.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Just some observations. I know when I sat on planning and zoning, we had a big long discussion, and no questions of you if that makes you feel uncomfortable, that, that we had a glut of student rate housing and people were trying to come in and build more. And so at the time, I think we did the survey and we needed more market rate housing, that's before COVID. Of course, COVID pushed a lot of things down where we couldn't build. And so now, I think we've all seen a huge increase in the rental rates. And I'm seeing, you know, I've got some rental property and, you know, what, used to be 450 is like crazy expensive now. I have a daughter that lives in Raleigh, and to buy a house is crazy. You drive 40 minutes out from Raleigh, you're still crazy. The rental prices are crazy. And so looking at that, I've done some homework, and I think what drives that is the supply is exceeded by the demand, so you can ask more for your property when there's not enough of it. And so my thought about this is that, you know, we need more market rate housing to drive down the prices, because if you got more of something and, and you exceed the demand, the prices are going to naturally come down. And that makes the people like, I think Councilmember Foreman, you and I talked about, about people that have jobs but can't afford the rent because their jobs aren't able to afford them. And so it's interesting, and I, and I pulled this up, and it just, I guess, I guess you read stuff, you get it. Governor Stein weighed in on this yesterday, and he said, and I didn't know this, we are the third fastest growing state in the country-
Right.
-in terms of growth, behind Texas and Florida. And part of that problem, which is I think driven primarily by COVID, and the experts are sitting out there, Dustin Mills, is that our housing is not kept up with the demand. So he says we need more housing. We need to, this is a quote, "We need to increase our housing supply." And the same way, and Dustin, I'm glad you're sitting here tonight, we need to also make sure the housing is affordable. So you do that a couple of ways. Number one, you build the market rate housing and make sure the supply is really good so you can drive, you know, you can accommodate the demand, drive the prices down. And then you're going to have good developers like Dustin, his crowd, which I keep bragging on because I'm so proud of it. We need to build affordable housing, and I know what you guys are doing. So the market rate housing, I think, will drive down the prices, and we need more of it. We need a lot more of it. And so I think that's a really good thing for doing. And again, I just want to echo Governor Stein's comments yesterday about that on his, his social media, about North Carolina is the fastest, third fastest growing state in the country after Texas and Florida. We need to increase our housing supply. He didn't stop there. He said, and we need to make sure housing remains affordable. You do that two ways. Number one, drive the price down, do the supply. And number two, you have your developers really work with you and do the affordable housing projects like we've done here in Greenville, and we're still doing, which is a good thing. Looking at the project itself, one of the things I know, I think, when you commented on, having these multiple entrances can be bad, but also can be good because instead of having one way to come into the neighborhood, if there's a fire, a medical emergency, you've got multiple ways to get into that neighborhood, through fire, EMT, or police, instead of just having two. And I think that's a great benefit. There's people in there who have an emergency, what if you have something that goes on? And the entrance way to Cobblestone, you can't, you have a more difficult time getting back there, but oh, you can come in from the development that's now being talked about. So, you know, I'm, I'm really in favor for those kinds of reasons because we do need more housing, because we can drive down the price so those people that have jobs can have affordable housing. And then we also, as a council and developers out there, work towards more affordable housing, which we're, Greenville's doing a great job of. And again, to have local people who grew up here and be top forty in the country, I think says a lot what Greenville's doing and what we're trying to do. So that's just my comments on it. I think it, it's a project that is a good project, but always acknowledge, you know, we're growing and we got growing pains. Another thing is, by this project gets built out, we hopefully will have got the roads where they can handle it. And then I'm going to encourage my developers here tonight, members here, we all need to get together, use whatever influences we have, from the city, the county, the university, developers, private individuals, and work towards General Assembly and saying, we need to get some DOT stuff going on down here. And so with the unity of doing that as a unified voice, we can get our DOT stuff down here. And so these projects sitting on the back burner are causing us infrastructure problems. So with that, I'll conclude. Mayor, thank you for letting me make some comments.
All right, any other discussion? Anyone want to enter a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion made by Councilwoman Robinson, second by Councilmember Scully. Any other discussion before we vote?
I just wanted to echo some of that. I understand all your concerns and share them, but also am encouraged by the fact that it's market rate. I'm encouraged by some of the numbers they shared with us about keeping the units, how some have not been sold, or it sounds like some of their other properties have not degraded, like we've seen some here degrade. I understand the citizens' concerns about the connectivity, but I also think that's a good thing. I understand why they're concerned about the change, because it'll bring more traffic to their neighborhood. But generally speaking, overall, I think we really want to see neighborhoods with connectivity to one another. I would love to see some quality commercial development on the corner there. We don't know what that's going to look like, but ideally, we want to see quality commercial go back into dense residential, going back into the larger homes. I think that the flow of this is what we want to see. I understand change is hard and scary for everybody, and it needs to be done well, and it needs to be communicated really well so that they're comfortable and that they know fully what's coming. And so they feel like they have an understanding that it's going to be a quality neighborhood and what to expect, and that's, hopefully drive up the value of their own property and not, not drive it down.
Well, that was the other thing that I did mention, is with driving up the value, it also drive up the taxes, they were concerned about that.
We can work on lowering the tax rate.
But, you know, we, we keep talking about affordable because it is below the highest rate, but-
Yeah, it's still a very, that's a high rent, even though it's below, I think the numbers they listed were the highest rents in town.
Yes.
It's below those.
Yes.
Which is good, in a way, just below. And I know that that's not affordable, but it does encourage me to think that it's going to be a nice development, that will be a good neighbor to the properties to the north, even though it's pretty dense and an apartment setup. I think it'll be a nice neighborhood, but based on what he shared with us in those price projections.
Well, to say out loud again, their biggest concern with that was that it was apartments rather than single-family homes and duplexes. And that over time, historically, we've had a lot of apartments not maintain the quality that they started with, once, if developers got to the point that they weren't making enough money or feeling the units. So what I want to be clear for, clear about for the citizens that would be watching, is this is just unifying for the comprehensive plan and that they have to come back for rezoning. And there would be community engagement, more community engagement, and I'm being clear right, Amanda, between now and then. And if that community engagement is not what council wants to hear, there's an opportunity at that time to, you know, make some changes or do or deny. Okay?
Any other discussion?
I have another comment here. I just wanted to say that I think this is a perfect opportunity for the developer to listen to what the council has said and hearing the questions and the discussion that we've had to be able to come back with and pleasantly surprise us with the work that they've done, do their due diligence to work with the community, because that's a lot of what you heard up here in terms of what we have on our minds, keeping all the things in consideration. But of course, as Councilman Foreman says all the time, the daily experiences of those that live in that part of our city. So, but it's a wonderful opportunity that you have to, to show us what, what you have in mind and how you can do it in a responsible way. So.
Any other discussion? Motion made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I have number six, request for approval of a substantial amendment to the 2024 Annual Action Plan. I will call for our Community Development Program Manager, May Skeen, for the presentation.
Man, we lost half of our crowd.
Wait, the night is young. Where are you going?
Everybody's leaving. Hey, they're lost, right?
All right, so tonight, we're presenting a request for approval of a substantial amendment to the 2024 Annual Action Plan. This amendment is necessary to reallocate funding to better support our housing and rehabilitation program. The annual action plan is the city's roadmap for how we invest federal and local dollars into community development each year. It aligns with our five-year consolidated plan and allows us to report on our progress, priorities, and accomplishments throughout the year. Okay? The annual action plan is a federal requirement tied to our CDPG and home funds. It includes detailed budgets and descriptions of activities. When we make significant changes like reallocating funds or adjusting program priorities, we must engage the public through a formal amendment process. HUD requires a substantial amendment under several conditions. These include changes to the funded portions of the plan, changes to targeted areas, or reallocation to more than 10% of the total award. Adding or removing eligible activities also qualifies. Our current reallocation falls in this category. Here are the top priorities guiding our 2024 Annual Action Plan, expanding affordable housing through new construction and rehabilitation, supporting first-time home buyers, strengthening partnerships with nonprofits. To date, we have exceeded our homeowner rehab goal, engaging three new contractors and completing more than 10 rehabs. We are on track to start 22 rehabs by June of 2025, by the end of June. Lincoln Park Phase Two has created six new homeowners, generated more than 1.2 million in program income. 400,000 of that, of which we now propose to reallocate to support ongoing rehab needs. We submitted our original annual action plan to HUD in May of 2024, began our activities in July of 2024, and public comment on this amendment took place between March and April of this year. So tonight, staff recommends holding the public hearing for the 2025, 2024, 2025 Annual Action Plan substantial amendment to introduce home rehab into fund with $400,000 from program income.
All right, any questions? Councilmember Blackburn?
One question. One question, one quick question. By allocating these funds for rehabilitation, I know that we've done a lot with building homes and want to continue doing that. Does this in any way affect that, our projected ability, our ability to continue building the single-family homes that we've done?
Short answer is no. We are looking to, so this particular $400,000 is coming out of our rental development line. So we, we would not have any issues with, I'm sorry, we would not have any issues, we would not need to reduce construction for rental development or new construction with moving money out of our program income. Sorry about that.
And I will say that staff's done a great job of trying to move these rehabs along, but we want to, we want to do everything we can to expedite the rehabs that are on the books, that are, had just been waiting and waiting and waiting.
And we are anticipating new funds to roll around the first of July.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seen none, thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those speaking on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Going to go out on a limb, we're not going to have any speakers. Whole side's empty. For all those at home, the whole side's empty. All right, seen none. Those in that position to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Here's one to get all the speakers.
Seen none. Public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion or a motion.
Second.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay.
Motion passed six zero.
All right. Other items of business.
Thank you, Mayor. I have number seven, 2025 Home Investment Partnership Fund Commitment for Multifamily Rental Housing Development. I'll again call Skeen for the presentation.
All right, so our 2025 ARP Investment Partnership Fund Commitment for Multiple Housing Family Rental Housing Development. Home ARP funding can support a wide range of rental housing development activities. This includes acquisition, new construction, and rehabilitation of rental housing. Rehabilitation may also involve converting non-residential buildings. Eligible costs include hard and soft development cost, relocation expenses, and operating cost assistance or reserves. And here we provide an overview of the budget allocated for the Home ARP rental housing activities. These funds are intended to maximize impact, fill finance gaps, and ensure affordability for quality qualifying populations. The specific allocations will be discussed with the project proposals later in the presentation. Partnership between home funds and low-income housing tax credits are a proven method for affordability, and the city often collaborates with developers who apply for the LITC through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. This pairing increases the yield of affordable units while ensuring long-term affordability. Since 2010, the model has produced more than 450 affordable units in Greenville. This slide here illustrates previous successful developments that received city funding. Many of these were made possible through public-private partnerships leveraging LITC and home funds. We currently have two pending commitments, each of $500,000. The first one is Park Ridge Trace by Taff Mills Group. They're proposing 48 units with rents ranging from 475 to 995. The second one is Lindbeth Place by Cerber Development, also with 48 proposed units and similar affordability. Here's our timeline. Back in February, we issued a call for developers. The proposals were received in March and also staff looked over both proposals and came up with their own recommendations. We took this to the Affordable Housing Loan Committee meeting yesterday, and tonight we're bringing it here. Arlington Square Apartments is a proposed development from SEML Development Fayetteville Base Fund. This project includes 36 units with a rent range of $463 to $1,716. The developer is seeking 2025 LITC and requesting $715,000 in home ARP gap financing. Here's a map where the proposed project is located. It's off of East Arlington Boulevard. Okay, Turner Berry Trace is a senior housing development proposed by Taff Mills Group. They are a local developer. The project includes 72 units with rents between 500 and 995. They were awarded the LITC back in 2022, is now shovel-ready, making it a prime candidate for immediate funding. This developer is requesting $1 million in gap financing. This developer is requesting $1 million in gap financing. Here's a map where there's, where the red dot is. There's a site where the upcoming project will be located. It's off of Turnberry Drive. After reviewing all applications, staff recommends awarding $715,000 to Turnberry Trace. This project's shovel-ready, has LITC already secured, and will add much more needed housing, senior housing to our community. And it's also, it's more feasible with the timeline that we have to spend our Home ARP funding. At this time, we will bring up Dustin.
We already know Councilmember Robinson is totally against this.
I don't know what this guy's doing. He's gotta do more of that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And Councilman Robinson, appreciate the kind words and hear a lot of similar words from you all every time we appear before you. So thank you for your continued support of affordable housing. I'll be quick because I know that you've seen a lot of these pictures before, but I did want to share them for the benefit of the general public. We're here tonight talking about Turnberry Trace, which is a development that is fully funded but for a financial gap that was directly related to construction cost increases and increase in interest rates. And so that particular development, or this particular development's been on the shelf for the last two years. As staff said, we got credits back in 2022. And so since then, we've been trying to design around and look for additional sources of funding. We've been talking with staff, city manager's office. And luckily for us, RFP came out at the perfect time. We submitted and we're happy that staff saw to it to recommend us for approval. Just a couple of quick things, but you all know that Taff Mills is here, based here locally. To date, in Greenville, we've developed 510 affordable units. This would add 72 units to that mix. And we're also, as staff pointed out in their presentation, have a pending application that's presently seeking 9% tax credits that's directly across the street from Arlington Trace that you all have been to. I love pictures, so I wanted to show you all one of our most recent developments, Farrington Trace Senior. Good aerial picture here. And if you look directly over this building, you're facing Bell's Fork area. That's where this particular development will be located. Just a couple of pretty pictures. Love a good ribbon-cutting picture with the mayor. This is East Pen Trace on 10th Street Extension, Highway 33, across from the newer Walmart in Greenville. Parkside Commons is our first development that we developed over in the Medical District. And then just giving you kind of an updated overview of areas that were active throughout the state of North Carolina. And we are active in Virginia and Maryland as well. So here's a regional picture of the site. And when you dial in a little closer, I think it's pretty clear why we find this particular site really appealing. We share a property line with a food line. We share a property line with a bus stop. We can walk to an urgent med center. There are dentists, doctors, sit-down restaurants, fast casual restaurants. And then directly across Arlington Boulevard is the Walmart grocery store as well. In Catty Corner, to the intersection of Charles and Fire Tower is Harris Theater. So lots of opportunities for pharmacy, grocery, eating, and retail establishments. So we really like this site. We were fortunate to get it. We've acquired the site, and as staff said, we are shovel-ready, meaning we have all of our formal site plans approved. Theoretically, we could pull a permit tomorrow with payment of fees. Here's a quick rendering from one perspective that we think will fit nicely on the site. It's slightly underdeveloped. We think there's going to be a lot of green space that's left over. If you look just under the food line logo, you'll see an area that we're programming as a public park. It'll be on our property, but it'll be accessible to the public. And can't commit at this particular point in time, but we are seeking funding from a nonprofit to do something like a small pickleball court immediately adjacent to the food line, so it's nowhere near any homes. Because we do know there are complaints, noise complaints about pickleball sometimes. So to be, more to be determined on that. This is a better perspective where you can kind of see the programming for the park, lots of picnic tables. There'll be an outdoor, one of the things that we do is outdoor exercise areas. There's one on Parkside Commons on the rear of the property. Handicap-accessible fall-safe flooring with equipment, exercise equipment that is meant to try to activate our residents and get them out and active. And then finally, don't want to go through all of this, but the main thing we wanted to focus on, the rents are in the 550 to 975 range. Council has previously asked, so we wanted to include that there are a good range of rents at every income level, 40, 50, 60, and 80%. So we're excited about that. We will indeed restrict the development to affordable rents for a minimum of 30 years. That is, you know, consistent with the tax credit program. And this particular development represents a $16.6 million investment in community, which I always like to point out is a $231,000 per unit amount, which I think is critical to share. These are high-quality units. The development itself will have reading rooms, community rooms, workout rooms. It's just common little areas and nooks for the resident. And so with the city's support, we'll be able to bridge what is our final gap, which is the financial gap that we've been seeking to fill. And so we're excited that staff would recommend it. We would welcome your support of this development. And we anticipate if we are able and successful in getting the city's support financially, we'll be able to begin construction in late June. We've already begun closing calls, so we're working through the process in anticipation of receiving funding. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'll just say what I think everybody's thinking right now. This all sounds terrible.
I was hoping you wouldn't say that.
What is there bad to say about it?
Wait a minute.
I have a question.
He's got a park. He's got, I mean, he's got it all.
You couldn't plan this any better.
Thank you. We're excited and happy to have you as a part of it.
I do have one question. I know sometimes with your developments, you have apartments set aside for maybe certain populations, veterans or some. Is that the plan here as well?
Yeah, we're setting aside 10% of the units for Tristan, veterans. Right, same as Arlington Trace.
When you say homelessness, Tristan, or you mean in transitional housing or?
Transitioning out of homelessness.
Okay, alright.
I'd just like your vision to not just provide a roof over somebody's head for affordable living, but to provide the amenities that we all would love to have in a place to live. And that's just a visionary thing. I might just love that. You know, I love what you guys are doing, so y'all keep on doing it.
Well, thank you. I say that, I say this in a lot of neighborhood meetings. But my mom was a 40-year public school teacher at D.H. Connolly. And based on today's AMI, she never made enough to be above affordable housing rent ranges. So when we develop, I try to keep that in mind, that, you know, my mother could be living in this community. So we're proud of what we developed and thank you for your support.
Y'all do a great job.
I want to say this for, were you about to say something?
I was just thinking, I want my mom to live there too.
About the affordable housing, of course, I support you guys wholeheartedly. And our organization wrote a recommendation for this particular project and waiting for more. But as it relates to development altogether, you all set the standard, not just for affordable housing, but when you hear me in opposition oftentimes for development for general housing as it relates to apartment complexes, my mind, in the back of my mind, I'm often thinking of you all. We had a vote on Monday that my thoughts shifted a little bit from a comment that was made. And the reason that it did was because I was thinking of you all. Just what we just voted on, the last agenda item. Even though this is affordable housing, you guys, because you're from here and homegrown, have selected locations that complement its surroundings, not at the expense of the citizens that are already living here. I think part of that is because you're from here, you understand the landscape, you understand the social dynamics, and you understand the needs that are already here. In addition to that, the amenities that you offer. Those amenities, if some of our developers that were building regular commercial housing thought about that to, again, add to the quality of life of not just the people in the complex, but the citizens around them, I think it would be more palatable. Now, I don't want y'all to stop doing affordable housing because we need it. But as it relates to development at all, I think you all set the standard for what would be more desirable, at least for me in general as it relates to housing. So I really appreciate what you do. Maybe we can get you all in the room with some of the others that are talking about developing here. But thank you so much.
Thank you for those kind words.
Thank you for your heart, for serving, and for meeting people where they are.
Thank you. We do, I think you probably, you probably noticed this, but we put our name on the sign. Taff Mills, the Taff Mills Communities on all of our signs, but for Parkside because that was a different situation. But we put our name on the signs because we are from here. We're proud that we own those communities and our names are on it because we know we're going to take care of it and keep it in good standing with the neighborhood.
Right, and you've done that with the other units like Parkside. But the reason I changed my vote on Monday was because the thought of developing more, supporting more developers that were from here, that even if they were doing commercial because of the standard that you all set, made me even shift my vote on Monday for a line item. So I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
If so inclined, it might be a good way to make a motion.
Make a motion to approve, absolutely.
Alright, motion been made by Councilmember Foreman.
Thank you.
Second by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion? All those in.
I just, I would like to add that I too really appreciate. I know Valerie. I'm not gonna go on and on and on, but there is one of your developments right near where I live. And when I run, I love running around there. It's a beautiful development, so thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passed at six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dustin.
Alright, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Best part of the night. So I do not have a cover sheet from my shout-out, but I do want to give a shout-out to probably a good 100-plus employees. Over the past weekend, we had Pirates Fest here locally, and man, was it not outstanding. It was a beautiful day, and thousands and thousands of people showed up here in Greenville to enjoy all the festivities held down at the Town Common, even had boat rides. I know, I know even our Porsche, I think got out on, out on the boat to, out up and down the tar.
It's adventurous.
But behind the scenes, we had well over 100 probably employees that were making it happen. Everywhere from our special events within the city manager's office, to recreation and parks, to public works, to fire rescue, to police. And there is no way that that event could be pulled off for the benefit of our community without their hard work, that not just occurred on that one day, but for the months that led up to it and that entire weekend. It's incredible to think that you can set it up, tear it down, and clean it up so quick when you have thousands and thousands of citizens that come through. And so that's just a testament to the great work they do every single day and another successful Pirates Fest. But thank you to the staff and the excellent job that they did this weekend to make it a success.
Very nice. Councilmember Foreman?
No comments tonight other than spirit fingers for Taff Mills.
Like it. Very nice. Councilmember Blackburn?
I would like to just take a minute and, a minute, and to mention that in 1886, on this day, the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals was founded. The AS, and we know it today as the ASPCA. And I just thought this was a prayer that was really nice along those lines that I'd like to share with everyone. O God, source of life and power, who feedeth the birds of the heavens, increase our tenderness towards all the creatures of thy hand. Help us to refrain from petty acts of cruelty or thoughtless deeds of harm to any living animal. May we care for them at all times, especially during hard weather, and protect them from injury so that they learn to trust us as friends. Let our sympathy grow with knowledge so that the whole creation may rejoice in thy presence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Willis?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to our retirees. I hope they have a wonderful retirement. Thank you to our police department. Again, they had, again, tonight, their second installment of their Police Citizens Academy. It looked like they were going to be doing some really cool things this evening. And I have one more thing. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so thank you to all the individuals out there who work to keep our children safe and protected. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very nice. Councilmember Scully?
Thank you, Mayor. Not much tonight, but my oldest daughter, Ireland, is performing in Mamma Mia tomorrow night and Saturday at Rose High School. Tomorrow's performance is at 7:00 PM, Saturday at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. She'll be Tanya, which is a great part.
Great name, too. Alright, great name.
So come out and support the Rose High Theater Program with Mamma Mia. It'll be a really fun night. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Robinson?
Yes, I'd like to again congratulate Mr. Summers and Mr. Deans. What a testament to the city of Greenville to have those people working that long for us and letting them use their wisdom and knowledge and pass it down to those younger. So congratulations again to them. And you guys know when I first came on here, I wanted to do two things. My sports complex, that's work in progress. Yeah, Grove Greenville Raider. But also wanted, wanted to really work on our numbers for our police department. And so I'm very happy to announce that last Friday, we had 11 brand-new police officers sworn in. So congratulations to them. All of you guys be safe. Thank you for serving Greenville. We're working, we're cutting that number down. I know we got some more classes. And I'm a little sad that Ted wasn't here to see that, but I know he had a great part in that. So congratulations to him also, and congratulations to those. Next, happy birthday to my number-one son. He'll be, his birthday's on the 14th, so happy birthday, Clay, if you're watching, buddy. I know you don't like all that acknowledgement, but I love you. You're my number-one son because you're my only one son. Happy, happy birthday to Charlie King, that's my associate. He's been with me for a year. He's the son of Bill King. And love your work with the man. Thank you for being so dedicated. Happy birthday to you because it was yesterday. So he celebrated his birthday and his one-year anniversary with a law firm, so we're excited about him. And then finally, Mayor, I'd just like to say to Mark and Robin Bowman's family and friends, you are in our thoughts and prayers as you grieve through this process. And many of you know that we lost both of them in a very tragic airplane crash. He was a prominent dentist here, loved people, loved helping people, was charitable, did lots of dental work on a charity basis, and actually was probably, was going to do that at the time. His partner, her husband, is second-in-command at the Grover Utilities Commission. So guys, we're thinking about all y'all, we're keeping our thoughts and prayers. Keep your head up and know he's probably doing some dental work right now, bubba. So, Mayor, thank you for all that, and I appreciate your time to comment.
Thank you very much. Mayor President Davis?
So, Councilmember Robinson, how do you feel about people shouting you out for your birthday?
Well, I'm getting wiser, I hope, but I'm not older, I hope.
We'll, we'll take it. I mean, 25 looks good on you, so I wish you a very happy birthday.
I'll be honest, I'm really 32, but.
Oh, that is.
If you call me 25, I'll say 32.
Don't lie on camera.
Everybody knows. I do wish you a happy birthday. Michael made you some donuts. They're in the bag.
No, you didn't.
There are some donuts back there.
It's been a cake day.
You didn't eat any? I'll be eating some.
Okay.
Happy birthday. I did sing a song.
You did. I would say, yeah, one of the things I like to do is just sing "Happy Birthday." I don't carry a tune, but I like to do it just because I like to do it. And Councilmember sang "Happy Birthday" to me today, and it was a wonderful voice. I think she might have a second career.
No, it was in private because nobody else should hear that.
I recorded it, by the way. I'm gonna play it back.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Thank you so much for doing that, too.
Oh, you're more than welcome. And Chief, and Chief, both of you. Thank you for all that you do, and if you could please let us know when you're swearing in new people so that we can support and let them know how happy we are that they're coming to the city. But congratulations to all those who come aboard and thank all of our staff for all that they do each and every day.
Alright, I got three quick ones. Happy birthday to our colleague, Les Robinson, celebrating a birthday today. Happy birthday to a very, very special woman. Her name is Crystal, who works in our City Clerks Department, who I heard is, her birthday is on Sunday. Happy birthday! And then finally, my, your son and my daughter share a birthday on Monday. Caroline turns.
Great people were born that day.
Hey, that's right. So Caroline turns nine on Monday. So happy birthday to Caroline. Hope you have a special day on Monday. Hope you have a special day on Monday. And with that, I'm asking our city attorney to read the motion so we can go into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and councilmembers, I recommend that council adopt the following motion pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143 Point Dash 3, 18.11, to establish or instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of contracts or proposed contracts for the acquisition of real properties by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And this is gonna be.